Welcome everybody to our city council regular meeting, July 19, 2022. Calling the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Can everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Ready, begin.
Can we please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members? Thank you. Monica, could we get roll call, please?
Roll call, council member Soto?
Present.
Council member Moran?
Present.
Council member King? Mayor Potem Garcia?
Present.
Mayor Aguilar?
Present.
For the record, council member King is not in attendance, but his absence is excused.
Thank you, Monica. I'm going to move on to citizen comments. The section of agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not otherwise on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by myself, should come forward and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will provide an opportunity to address the city council as each item is brought for discussion. Do we have any citizen comments regarding any other item not on the agenda? Go ahead, sir. Is this regarding item number five?
Yes, sir.
Oh, so we'll have an opportunity under item number five for public comments?
Oh, okay.
This is items not on the agenda, for any items not on the agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, guests, staff. My name is Rafael Yamas. I'm the recently appointed veteran service officer from Merced County. I was appointed here last month by the board of supervisors, and I just want to again reintroduce the office. I have with me today a recently hired veteran service supervisor. I'd like to introduce him right now.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Neves. I'm the Veterans Claims Representative Supervisor.
Again, we're just going around all the citizens, let them know that we are open for business to help veterans file for their benefits they earned while in active service. So again, I'll leave my cards for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out and introducing yourself. Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other citizen comments at this time?
Evening, Mayor, City Council, Corey Gibson, undersheriff from Merced County. Hey, I just wanted to touch bases with the council and see what the plan was for the police chief position. As you recall, in November, this council approved for the sheriff's office to sign a lieutenant to the police department to provide police services as a police service manager. Since that time, the city has went out to recruitment to find a new chief. That was the agreement originally agreed upon with the sheriff's office. That recruitment was not fruitful, and we were unable to find a viable applicant at that time. So the decision, there was a lot of discussions between the sheriff's office and the city, and those discussions essentially gave three options. One, we stick around until we can find a new police chief for the city. Two, we've signed a lieutenant here permanently, but on a one-year contract. Or three, get a captain and then promote a lieutenant within as a succession plan for the next chief of police for the city of Livingston. Unfortunately, none of those plans are what we're currently on. We're on an extension through September, and I fear that the action or lack of action by the council is causing undue distress on the police department and causing several of the people within the agency to look for other employment. I don't know even if contracting with the sheriff's office at this point is going to be able to make the police department successful here in the near future. It's going to take a lot of investment for whoever the police chief is. So moving forward, I'm looking for the council to give us some direction on what you want to do. If the plan is to wait till the end of the contract in September and appoint a chief from within, because it takes anywhere from 16 to 90 days to get a chief that's viable once they've been identified. And right now, we're not even recruiting for a chief. So what is the plan? Are we going to appoint someone within the agency? And if that's the plan, then let's plan for it. But we don't need to wait till September to appoint a chief. Let's make that appointment as soon as we can, and then the sheriff's office can go back to bring the lieutenant back. The sheriff's office currently has $100 million in projects planned with the county, current Phase 1 jail construction, Phase 2 jail construction, a new admin building, and a radio system. So I need the manager at the sheriff's office of the city's not willing to contract, and we need to look at canceling and making the appointment sooner than later. So again, I urge you to communicate with us. I've had communication with the city, but until the council gives some further direction on what they want to do, if they're not going to make the decision, I'll make it for you, and we'll give notice. So this is me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizen comments at this time? Anybody on the phone?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
Mayor Mike Torres? I'd just like to report that we're getting more and more parked cars on the street. You know, you got cobwebs and all, they've been parked there for months. And I don't see, I don't know who's our code enforcement, whoever goes around town looking at stuff like this. And there's also more and more tractors parked at residential houses. You know, they shouldn't even be in the city limits part of the residential lot. So if somebody could get out there and do a little bit of work, appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely. We're taking notes, and we'll follow up with that, definitely. Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Anybody on the phone? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to announcements and reports. Vanessa, city staff announcements and reports. Anybody in the department?
Yes, Mayor, we have our Department of Finance reporting tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. At our last council meeting, there was public comments, citizen?
The mic.
Can you hear me now? Thank you. There was public comment at the last council meeting regarding penalties, late fees that were charged to our auto pay customers. And I wanted to bring back some information that we've gathered internally. So our financial software provider changed their merchant platform, and as a result, they sent out notices to all of the customers that were on auto pay to let them know that they had three months until June 22 to update their credit card data, which we do not hold in-house due to PCI compliance requirements. And of the approximately 560 auto pay customers, 50% did update their accounts and moved on as normal. 269, approximately 50% remaining, did not. In July, we reinstated late fees and shut offs, and as a result, the 269 that did not update their accounts did receive late fees for both, some for two months, some for one month, totaling $2,507.28. We will adjust off those late fees as was requested, and we'll send out letters to those customers to let them know of those adjustments and also to advise them to take action on the account to update their credit card details so they can continue on with auto pay. If they don't take that action, they'll be reverted back to just a standard account, and they'll be required to pay by the 25th. Otherwise, they'll incur late fees. So that's the update I wanted to provide regarding the auto pay conversation that happened at the last council meeting. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Thank you so much for that update. I know that was obviously some concern from the community, so I appreciate you guys addressing it and bringing it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vanessa, other departments?
Yes, we have our Public Works Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tony Avina, Public Works Superintendent. We're going to start off with a couple items that have been going on. We haven't had a presentation in a little bit, but I'm trying to do a catch-up here on, I know you're all aware of our wastewater treatment facility had some issues. It started off for us, our routine maintenance, little bit of water, ended up being a lot of water. We started the process of trying to locate the leak. Ended up being a little bit more than the Public Works staff could handle. At this time, I reached out for Vanessa to make a decision for us to go out and have some help. We did get some help right away. We did have to do a lot of, kind of, pretty much like replumbing. We have a lot of water coming to the headworks. The issue that happened was one of our check valves and this main line that you see in that hole ruptured. So what you see on all the way to the right is pumps that are diverting all the city sewer into the oxidation ditch. So this happened May 16, and we got crews, our city crews and our contract services to help us out. This is one of the issues that caused the rupture. One was the ruptured line that was about 15 feet deep. The other one was a check valve. A lot of these pipings and check valves that are failing are about closer to 30 years old. So those issues are coming up because of the age. At one point, one of our, the pump that I just showed you a little bit ago failed, and it started to back up over on the B Street area right before you get to the plant. All our crews, well, pretty much our whole crew was out there for pretty much the whole eight hours, plus the contractors. We were able to maintain, as you see, the cones divert all the traffic, and once we got it cleaned up, we were able to clean up, disinfect with our trucks, our staff. And then all the way to the right, you'll see the damaged pipeline after it was repaired. So these are the emergency repairs that were taken with our contractors, did the repairs and replaced that check valve.
Tony, if I may, Mayor, City Council, our Public Works crew worked, and I just wanted to share that you, your team, our team, worked many, many hours in order to avoid the, avoid any spillage of the sewer product into any of the streets. So that was just very important because our Public Works team, and kudos to them, that they were just working around the clock in order to ensure that the city, the safety and the?
The city was?
And the health and safety and the city was kept.
The city sewer never got in danger. It was all the downflow towards our plant, so it never got to where it was going to affect the city of Livingston residents and schools.
Yeah, at the same time, they were quick, they were very quick to divert any kind of spillage into another, another?
We ended up using pumps. That truck also is a giant vacuum, so we sucked up and diverted water until we made the cleanup afterwards. So after that, then we were able to, after, it was pretty much a whole eight hours out there, no breaks, no lunches. You know, a lot of water was taken out to staff. We brought in food for them. They, it was nonstop. It was, you know, take care of the community and make the roadway safe again is what it was.
Thank you, Tony.
And after the repairs here, well, let me go back one more. But after the repairs, it pretty much was about two weeks of ongoing work between city staff and the contractor that we were able to get everything back online. We have gotten quotes for repairs to upgrade that sewer. It's called the headworks that goes back to the oxidation. It's that we're looking at maybe for this 23 budget, replacing that main. And there's also three other check valves like the one I showed you that had ruptured to upgrade and replace the line and the check valves. So we'll be working on that with you guys as that comes forth.
Tony, I'm sorry. I know, but you showed me, and I think that it was just really, it was very telling when we went to the sewer plant. And yes, on one side, we have aging equipment or aging infrastructure that we are looking at. And this is why it's very important, and we are very thankful that council was able to adopt the rate study because this is exactly what the rate study takes care for the city and the citizens. In order for us to be able to replace any of this aging infrastructure, we are going to incorporate in the budget the replacing of some of those valves. Tony showed me at the sewer plant, some of these valves are suspended on top of the sewer system in that. So it's making it, it makes it very unsafe for any of our maintenance workers trying to do maintenance on those valves, having to be suspended and have this sewer residue or like collections right underneath them. So what we are looking at is doing some upgrades, and that will be coming, and it will be incorporated in the budget. But I'm very thankful that Tony and the team in our Public Works Department, we are getting quotes and we're bringing this. So it's much needed, much needed repairs and maintenance for the future of our sewer, our sewer plant.
Correct. So like I say, that was about two-week process. And we're still having a few issues here and there, but we're able to keep it up to date with our staff. The next project that we've just finished up on is fine line striping on the north side of town, which is a crosswalk that was needed badly over in the area of Hammond and actually Dwight and Walnut. The crosswalk there is there just past the Walnut Child development that is looking good and being used already. We did do some striping that was not even visible over in the area of Swan Davis by the Foster Farms area. There was a lot of brightening up of crosswalks, school crossings there in front of the St. Jude's Church. There was a lot of striping that was very faded. That also got completed. So we're moving forward and keeping up on, trying to keep all the striping bright here in town. One of the issues we've had a lot of calls, we've really been tackling it hard. It's hard. We were very understaffed. We're starting to get some staff back. We've also had a lot of issues with COVID, people on sick leave for months at a time, weeks at a time. So this is a weekend job that just was performed by Public Works. We had a crew of about 10 go out and hit the areas that were really getting a lot of complaints, and we tackled a lot of it. And we're still going strong on the areas that were getting complaints. So we're not completely caught up, but we're working on it. This is a machine that is bought about a year and a half ago, and it's being put to use as soon as we get out there. You know, it does wonders. It's just a little machine. Instead of you see people out there with trimmers, with hand trimmers and pole trimmers, this thing just drives through and just makes it so easy to try to catch up. And like I say, we spent about six hours this weekend. They had been tackling it in the prior weeks, and they've been hitting it hard again. So we're starting to catch up, and it's starting to look nice. It is hard with the heat, but they did a good job this weekend. Another issue that we just finished up, I know you're all aware that a lot of our orders for special items, this was hit about two and a half months ago, and it's just barely being put back up because of the orders, special orders and stuff. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that that area in front of Foster Farms is safe, and that was hit by a drunk driver, and it's back in place where it needs to be. We're in the drought. Everybody knows we're in the drought. There's a little, a couple statistics I have here, but pretty much it's, what it's saying is we need to be careful. The city, the state, everything that you see on that one, there's a little dot. We're talking about severe drought, and we're right next to that area in the severe drought area. It's ongoing for the statistics, statistics show 889 days that we've been in drought conditions. Contractors are having, 5% of state water project contracts will be met in 2022. Another item here that we have, medium depth of the wells in the last 36% from prior years. Change in the urban water used between May 22 and 2020, 2% down overall in July 2021. Household reports shortages, they're up 29%. So it's happening with a lot of issues with home wells. The wells are historic low in 10 years. That's how low some of these wells are getting. The reservoirs, I don't know about you guys, but if you go around, they're 25% full compared to where they should be. Per capita, people are using more water because of the heat and drought. The per capita usually is what people use in one day was averaging 81. It's gone up to 83%. With that being said, our parks, our landscapes, we're trying to keep up with everything we can. I know you drive around, and not only do you see dry parks, but there's homeowners and businesses that are not watering. Other communities are the same way. I drive around city of Atwater and other communities, and they're not even watering some of their parks. So with peak demand and Foster Farms, our parks are trying to stay green. There's some dry spots, some of it is from the drought, some of it is from not having enough staff. But we will continue to work hard to keep our LMDs, our parks in our city going. And that's pretty much my report. Any questions?
Thank you so much for the report. Do you have any update on the playground? I know.
Yes, they had updated us about a month ago, saying that by the end of this month, we should have notification. Like I say, we had taken that playground down probably two months ago. So right now, I was looking at the email, and it was like towards the 28th or 29th of July. So if everything goes good, it may be here. If we don't get another well, something else came up. So we're working on it, and that's all we could do is wait until they get us the equipment, and then it'll be back in place.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I know that obviously issues with supply, that's out of our control, but thank you for looking into that. Thanks for the crosswalks and signage. I know that's something I, we've been advocating for some time. So I appreciate you guys addressing those, especially the ones over there by the sports complex where people cross the street to go walk in the evenings and everything else. In regards to landscaping, I appreciate you guys addressing that. I mean, as Vanessa knows, we advocate for those kind of issues, but at the same time, I did understand that you guys were short-staffed, and COVID and everything else made it difficult, but thanks for coming in on the weekend and handling that. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Counsel? Go ahead, sir.
What kind, excuse me? It was an old, old cement pipe. The contractors even had a hard time trying to match repairs to do that repair. So it was, it's a very old, it was hard to find and locate the?
But it was concrete?
Yeah, some type of concrete. So we will look at upgrading that to a C900 high-pressure pipe.
No questions, just comments and appreciation to your entire team. I know that as well. I received a lot of calls and messages in regards to parks and some of the streets, some of the overgrowth on some of the, some of the streets near the sidewalks. And, but I also do appreciate that the people are reaching out and also their understanding, you know, after they learn that, you know, how short-staffed you are right now. And it does take a while to catch up, even though sometimes when you have two or three days without watering any area, then you will end up with some dry patches, and then it takes longer to catch up. It takes about a week to two weeks to start seeing the, after you start watering and stuff like that. So thanks to the entire team, and I know that we did a visit to the plant, and you were able to show me some of those areas of concern, and hopefully we can, once it comes to the budget, we can kind of look at and consider everything that needs to be done in your department as well. And so actually a question. How, how many, how many spots do you have open right now in Public Works? How short-staffed are you still?
We're minus one part-timer. In the last two weeks, we have employed one more full-timer and two part-timers. With that being said, you know, they're also brand new, so it's hard to them, for them to just jump in and start helping out. So, but the hands that we did receive, the employees, is a big, big help already. So they're learning quick, and they're able to help out. So we appreciate that we were able to?
So you still short three?
Right now, just one.
One and one?
One part-time employee.
Tony, I'm so sorry. Councilmember Moran, just within the past two or three weeks, we were able to fill three vacancies. So what Tony is referring is that it takes some time for those new staff to, with the onboarding process and training, to kind of guide them to what their job will be, it is. So we're going through that learning curve with our brand-new employees.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, one more question real quick. I know I've advocated with Vanessa for this before, the canals. I know MID, you guys have communications with MID in regards to like the weed abatement and the canals. I mean, they're in pretty bad shape. When's the last time we've had any communication with them?
On a regular basis, so whatever needs to be done, we usually have not just weed abatement throughout town, but usually those canals. So I'll make a note of that to make sure.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Vanessa, any other, or any other question, counsel for Tony? Garcia on the phone? Okay.
Negative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa, any other?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, our Recreation Department will announce some key dates.
Good evening, everyone. I have actually quite a few things, so I'm going to make it quick. I'm going to speed talk. Just stop me when you have a question. So soccer, we had one of the, our last registration Saturday, last Saturday, and we are 100 kids over what we had last year, fresh off COVID. So we have 452 kids registered in soccer. Super excited. I guess they like us. I'm glad. Our opening ceremonies, if you would like to mark your calendar, is for August the 26th and our practices do start next week. We will have the completion ceremony and the handing off of the keys this Thursday, of which you probably have all heard about. But we do want to continue to invite the public because this is a monumental day. And we've been waiting for it for a long time and it's happening. So it's at 7 o'clock at the corner of Sixth and D Street. The building will be open and it's cleaned up so that the community can go through and take before and after pictures. They'll get pictures of what it looked like prior to us having our recplex. And then we'll have another, or another festival when we have the building. Saturday, we continue to work with University California Merced. Our second phase of the Oral History Project will be taking place. We have another dozen families that will be filmed on Saturday for this project. We're also on Saturday are running another project as part of our 100 Hours for our 100 Years. We're looking for volunteers to help at Camp McConnell. It's just the Boy Scout camp right down the street. The Lions are taking charge and helping us build a couple of horseshoe pits. And we're going to be doing some painting to help the Boy Scouts get their place in shape. So if you're interested, community, please message us or call the office 394-8830 or Facebook us or just show up. So the camp will be making lunch for everybody and it'll probably run like 8:00 AM to 2:00 if we have enough people that can help us. Also, our Centennial Shirt Order has been extended through Thursday night. We figured at the event, we'll have more people and every day more people are coming in, so we've got actually quite a few. So the draft of the school curriculum has been given to us and we do have all the different agencies, the school districts reviewing it. And I will, as soon as we go through that whole process, I'll be sharing it with you guys. And next Tuesday, our photo op sign, when you drive past the courtyard, our 100 Years with our seal will be out there for people to stop and take a picture with the 100 Years in the museum in the background. So that's pretty exciting. I have two different designers that are working on Centennial projects right now. One is for our mobile exhibit that we will have at the schools. And the other one is for the Centennial exhibit that will go into the museum. Our adult softball is in high gear running. We have six teams that are playing on Friday nights. Our Sweet Potato Festival is well on its way to being planned. We have a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting next Thursday. You're always invited to. That's the 28th. And with that, is there any questions?
Thank you, Jackie. Appreciate everything you guys do in the rec department. It sounds it's going to be like a successful soccer season. So appreciate everything you guys do. It was nice talking to you this morning, catching up and welcome back from your vacation. Counsel, any questions?
I have a quick question. When you do the interviews, are they going to be outside again?
At our Calian Park this time, so that we don't have...
And so you won't have traffic noise in the...
Correct. And the outhouse in the background, yes. True.
Good. Well, first of all, welcome back. We miss you. Oh, I miss you. And I know that you're, you've got a lot of things going on. And I was out there on Saturday at the assessment for soccer. There was a lot of kids.
And that was just our upper division. That wasn't even the little biddies.
Yeah, yeah, I know. And parents were really excited to have their kids out there. And some of them, well, there was actually a couple of parents that I talked to and they said that they're happy to be able to bring their kids back into town because, you know, they, they actually, apparently they had participated in another program outside of town, but they're glad that they're able to bring them back into town and to see their little friends with, playing with them and stuff like that. So just another, and I always advocate for your program and for your programs that you have, because compared to other cities around us, you have one of the best programs running. And so I know it takes a lot of work and it takes teamwork and it's very difficult sometimes to do. So and the community is a big part of it too as well. So thank you for what you do for our community.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counsel, any other questions? Garcia on the phone?
Negative, I don't have anything.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jackie. Vanessa, anybody else?
Thank you, Mayor. Our interim police chief is not, was not feeling well today, but I do have a written report that I will read to the council to provide some statistics on our fireworks weekend. So the message is from June 28 through July 4, the police department responded to 35 calls for service regarding fireworks. In total, through the week, there were eight citations issued and one search warrant served for illegal fireworks. There were close to 100 pounds of illegal fireworks seized throughout the week. And last year, during the same timeframe, there were 111 calls for service involving fireworks with 15 citations issued. There was a drastic decline that we attribute to an advertisement campaign and pro/anti-illegal firework activity. Also, we are pleased to announce that through cooperation with our local gang task force and federal counterparts, a high-ranking criminal, street gang member from Livingston was captured in Texas for a 2021 attempted murder that occurred in Livingston. Livingston detectives will be flying to Texas in the coming days to bring this individual back to Merced County to stand trial. This was a great collaborative effort. And that's all for the written report that I have.
Thank you, Vanessa. Are we going to go ahead and move on? Any other departments? No?
No other departments. We will move on to city, we have a person, not a presentation, but I have a visual for city manager's report.
Okay, so city manager announcing reports. Go ahead.
So just a question and then probably having had a chance to talk to the chief, but maybe... So recently, in the last recent months, I noticed a little bit more of graffiti around the city. Sometimes in smaller places or smaller areas and/or in alleys, in the back of certain businesses, just maybe we can kind of see, well, there's basically an increase in graffiti. And normally what that means, most of the time, it's either gangs trying to show off, you know, against another group of people. So just wondering, and eventually maybe we can get some feedback or some report if there's anything that they seen from the police department's perspective in regards to that additional graffiti. And maybe eventually Public Works can, or I don't know, I'm assuming it will probably go to you guys to clean some of those area, you know, clean up some of those areas in regards to graffiti. But just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, Councilmember Moran. I will share this message and we will provide a report. Sometimes you're correct, it's Public Works. Sometimes we also have to work in collaboration with other agencies. I believe Caltrans provides some maintenance of the freeway area. So that is, we work with those outside agencies as well. So we just, I'll relay this message and we will provide a report back to council.
Hi, Vanessa. You're up. Your report.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share really quick. During our last meeting in July 5, we had Christine with the, with MCAG, with the Transit Joint Powers Authority, provide a public comment. And this is in regards to some changes for the bus stop service here in Livingston. The changes are to be effective August 13 of 2022. And I just wanted to provide a visual to our council and our residents that are here attending the meeting or are watching, that some of this, some of these revisions are being made in order to streamline the route for the bus service here in Livingston. Overall, we are going to have 11 bus stops in and around the city. And they are proposing to either merge or eliminate some stops in order to, in order to make their service run more efficiently in the city. So Monica, if you go to the next slide? Thank you. So I just wanted to have a visual for the council and our citizens that on the right, you will see, or the left, you will see the new passenger stops that are proposed. There are 11 that will be going all around the city. And what I noted on the side, it's the removed stops. It's a total of five. And pretty much four of those stops, they're being merged with either some of this closer in new locations. And there is one, the Harvest in North Main Street stop that it's being removed due to the counts and the data for the Transit Authority, that there was no, no use in that, in that bus shelter. Along with that, with the new, the new stop services, the MCAG through the Transit Authority, they're also going to be installing new bus shelters all around the city, around the 11 stops that we have listed here. And I just wanted to share that from our, from the MCAG Transit Manager, Christine, she noted that there will be a public hearing coming up at the MCAG Governing Board that is held at 3:00 PM and it's coming up next, this Thursday, the 21st. And it is located at the Merced County Administration Building, third floor. And if you need any more information, the mcagov.org website, it's available and you can find a copy of this report and the item that it's going for public hearing. But this will be essentially the new passenger stops that will be, that will be discussed and up for approval at the public hearing on the 21st of July.
Thank you, Vanessa. This is just additional information, but this is all obviously after some research has been conducted in regards to the use by passengers, areas, and ultimately just to be more cost-effective as an organization. But I know a lot of time and research was conducted. For example, like the Harvest in North Main Street, I believe there was no use whatsoever. So they're trying to be more efficient and be accommodating. I appreciate that they're trying to have new covers for all the stops in Livingston. But yeah, I mean, of course, public hearing will be on Thursday at 3:00. If anybody's interested or have other thoughts, make sure you please join the meeting. Anything else, Vanessa?
Yes, thank you. So, thank you, Monica. I just wanted to share that the city is experiencing very good, a very good turnout with the California Department of Community Services Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. This is another assistance program for our city residents who are experiencing hardship with their, with their utility bills. And so far, we have been able to refer to customers with a very positive outcome, that they've received the assistance they needed and they've, their bills are up to current. So we continue to provide our residents who are having or experiencing a hardship, the options of working with them through payment plans, either providing the resources for these programs available. And also, we're working with the not-for-profit agencies for the CDBG funding that we received that was very successful and helped many of our residents here in the city for utility services. Last, but not least, the city's designated cooling zone is located at our police department. So through this very, this days with high, high heat, the police department, it's a designated place for our residents to find some relief. We have, it's, we have air-conditioned space in the lobby and water is provided. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Vanessa. Any questions for Vanessa, counsel?
Just if I can, if you can email me a copy of the list for the old and the new bus stops, that way we can share with the community as well. Thank you. That's it.
Sure.
Any other questions, counsel? Garcia on the phone?
I don't have anything.
Okay, we're going to move on to city council member announcing their reports. Councilmember Samorhan?
Yes. A few, almost two weeks ago, I was able to be present during the swearing-in of a new police officer or a reserve officer. So just getting more officers out there in the community and congratulations. Also, I was able to participate and be present in the Phase Three and final phase of the campus parkway, campus parkway road section coming from Highway 99 and connecting using Merced. It was built in three different sections. This one was Phase Three and the final phase. And I believe now it's open to connect people coming from Merced in a different way, in a different route, that would help and benefit students and people residing in that area. And it will help alleviate traffic in certain areas of the city. So, and it was great to see that being completed. I know that it took a few years anyways. Also, I'm also a part of Alliance, Livingston Lions Club. And as part of Livingston Lions, we've been working on repainting and cleaning up and making our welcome sign on Hammett a little bit more beautiful. Last year, we worked on the one on Wynton Way. So just, it is, it will be completed probably within a month or so. And I will bring another update soon in regards to the sign, once it's done. And this is all volunteer work from Livingston Lions and some other members in the community. On Saturday, I was able to participate and volunteer for the soccer assessment organized by the Recreation Department. It was great. It's just nice to see a lot of kids out there. I'm glad that the assessment was able to be completed like around 11:30, like right before heat really started coming down. And I also, and earlier I mentioned something about graffiti. And this one, I do get a lot of calls and messages in regards to, you know, what's going on out there and I... I really appreciate the community. There was, you know, there was some graffiti, some of our, some of the tables at Gallo Park and I know somebody else called me in regards to some additional graffiti at one of the, in the play area, in the playground area. I haven't been out there at Gallo Park to, to look at it, I haven't had a chance, but I did go and looked at the graffiti on, on the top surface of those tables. I came back a little bit later with some alcohol wipeies and stuff like that, I cleaned it up. I mean, I, it looks better, but I know that we probably need to go out there and kinda, you know, use something else to, to give it a nice cleaner. And so, once again, thanks to the community for getting us updated on, you know, because the residents are the ones out there. As much as we want to be out there, we cannot be everywhere. So. Another thing in regards to water usage, it's, it's, it's something that is not just happening here in the Central Valley or in, or just in California. This is all over the place, this is in, in other countries as well. I know that in Nevada, there's other lakes that depend on, or that are feeding some big cities and they're roughly at about 15% to 20% of capacity with, you know, so we're not the only ones, but at the same time, we should work as a community and try to conserve and, and not, not, it's not so much wasting water, but just be more mindful of how we use water. Sometimes it's, you know, just how we're, wash a car, you know, sometimes instead of just, there's different ways that we can be more efficient or how we use water around the house, in the backyard, or when we're rinsing or washing a patio, you know, there's different ways to clean the patio other than just with the, other than with the water hose. So we just gotta be more mindful of how we use water. And just an update, I just, I, over the weekend or, yeah, over the weekend, I tried to, I tried to, I did try to communicate with the rest of my colleagues and I just wanted it to, I will, I have the, in the last few weeks, I did my own independent audit in regards to some of the concerns that I've been having in regards to some city attorney invoices. I was able to deliver my findings or copies of, of the invoices for the last 12 months and with my concerns and highlights, which totaled roughly over $110,000 in questionable, or just concerns that I have in regards to those invoices. I have copies for each one of my colleagues. I was able to deliver this package or one of the packages to Mr. Garcia. And so I have one for each one of my colleagues and also for the attorney, so that way you can have a copy and kinda, you know, we can talk about it later. So anyways, so just, just wanna let that know. Other than that, that's it. And that's it, thank you.
Councilmember Maria Soto? Mayor Peton Garcia?
Yeah, I don't have anything to report at this point, thank you.
Thank you sir. In regards to myself, I have nothing to report today, so we're gonna go ahead and move on. I do, I know out of respect for the family for item number five, is that okay Council? We move item number five right now? I think you might guess wanna, I don't know if you guys came from out of town? Yeah, did you guys? Okay, so is that okay with you guys? We move item number five to right now, Council?
Yes, actually I was gonna request that.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to item number, thank you Garcia. Item number five, which is a discussion, direction for alternatives on remaining street, renaming a street to Cesar Chavez. So I brought this, thank you Vanessa for the short staff report, appreciate the time it took on doing this. So I'll, since I brought it up last, or over a month ago, I'll, I'll get it started. Basically, this was brought up, a request from community members to identify a street, rename a street, assign a street ceremonially or symbolically, just to include that history of many generations of farmworkers around this area. You know, Cesar Chavez obviously was active around this area, passed through here with the civil rights movement and marches. So a lot of people in the community, especially with the United Farm Workers Foundation, still active around the area and doing a lot of community service, you know, thought it would be a good idea. So I know we had an initial discussion over a month ago. I did state or use an example as Campbell, but obviously quickly we were educated that that'd be a terrible idea, which I agree. So just to reassure the family, that's not what we're seeking tonight or trying to do at all. And I think I could speak for the Council, I don't think none of us want to erase any type of history, but we wanna include some more history, for example, the Cesar Chavez. So my idea, what I would like advocate for to the rest of the Council is identify a street to symbolically name or identify, kind of like the city of Merced did with M Street where it's also known as Veterans Boulevard. I think that'll be probably more cost-effective and less work for city staff in regards to, or postal office and to change all the addresses to a different street or whatever. Would be more of a symbolic kind of identifier. I know, speaking with the community, someone were saying like B Street, one of the main streets, or even Walnut, because I know during those marches, the, the route the march would take was down Walnut and stop at the Catholic Church and eat and hydrate and then continue from there. Even some recent marches, like in 2018, they started on Walnut Catholic Church and went through Main Street to Memorial Park. So, so this is more of a discussion of what you guys think in regards to just identifying a street and symbolically, kind of AKA also known as Cesar Chavez Way, not Campbell, but maybe B Street or Walnut or something like that. So Council, any thoughts or any questions or anything?
Yes, well first of all, thank you to everyone that was able to reach at me and I did get some emails, some Facebook messages, some calls and, and some in-person conversations and, and that goes to tell me how important this is and, and it's very meaningful and it's very appreciative that people, that actually, you know, different people in the community are able to provide input in regards to this item that we were discussing prior. And, and also the way I saw it, also a great opportunity to be educated, be educated and learning more about our history. I think it's, that was, that was something positive that I was able to get out of it. I was able to learn more about what, the meaning and how it came to be Campbell Boulevard, where it came from, the history part of it, the, all of the volunteer work that was done for the city or within the city from different members of, of the family, not only in PD, but also at the library, at the high school and other, other, in other areas. So, you know, but then that also brought up other things to where I was encouraging other, other members, other families in the community to be able to do that as well, you know. We don't want to wait until something like this happens to be able to learn more about, about our, some of the history that we have in the community. And I know that's a little bit of that history, it's also in the museum. The last time I was in the museum was probably about six months ago and I know that even prior to that was probably about six months before, but even before that, I had never been to the museum myself. And I also heard in the past that there's people in our community that has never, ever, ever been to the museum at all. So this is very important and, and it's unfortunate that, the way it happened, but the good thing about it that, you know, that, that that came out and that at least I was educated about it. And definitely, there's other ways, there's other options that we, for us to consider and the input of the community, it's always, it's always welcome and I always encourage it. So thank you to everyone that was able to reach out to me, that took the time to make those phone calls, took the time to send those emails, those Facebook messages. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Mayor, you have any comments?
I would just like to hear from the family, thank you.
Garcia at this time?
No, I just say it's a great idea and for us to identify, I mean, at least two, that way the public's involved in. We could do a survey on that, so that's just where I stand on it. A great idea.
Thank you Garcia. Yes, I'll definitely open it to public, but yes, thanks, thank you for, you know, reaching out. I was able to speak to the family and I spoke to some of the old timers from town and, and which provided insight right after the meeting. So we do appreciate you guys reaching out to us, absolutely. And so I'll open up for a public comment at this time?
Hi, my name's Ida Scola. I grew up on the corner of Fourth and East Street. When I was a little girl, my dad was a policeman here and I thought Mr. Campbell was a magician because when I would go out to talk to my dad, when he came home for lunch, this voice would come over and he would call my name. He, he knew who I was and stuff. We grew up here, he was the person that you called if you needed help. His wife was wonderful, she had a great clothing shop in town, their kids were good, I used to babysit for their grandkids. That's a family that's been in this town has a lot of history and to honor Mr. Campbell or Jack, my dad called him, is wonderful. To take away the name of that road and change it would be horrible. There are many other roads you could name for Mr. Chavez. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for meeting me, with me today, City Manager. My name is Kathy Thompson Valdez, I grew up here on Fifth Street. My brother still lives in our family home there. I am Jack Campbell's granddaughter and I've reached out to several of you this week. I wanted to say that I appreciate you getting back to me, Councilmember Soto and Mayor Aguilar and Councilmember Moran, you returned the emails and we had phone calls and I greatly appreciate that. I know that it's tough to be a public servant these days. I'm hearing that you're walking back the proposal to take our grandfather's name off of Campbell Street and perhaps you're looking at other streets. We only found out about this proposal Saturday night, so we're still a little bit rocked by the fact that that would have come up as a proposal. My family just found out about the proposal that was made at the June City Council meeting via a social media post. We were given no notice and no due process. A proposal was sent forth to name a street in honor of Cesar Chavez. There is absolutely no issue with that request. Cesar Chavez was a great civil rights leader and advocate. The issue our family has is that the street mentioned by the mayor and forwarded to City Council was named for our grandfather. His, his name was selected by a committee of Livingston residents, forwarded to City Council, voted on and approved to be honored with that street that was named for him. They did this to honor him, his history and legacy in Livingston. Our family takes much pride in that. We don't feel this is respectful of our family. Would it make sense to erase or change or replace Alverness Field, Arcalian Park, Wynton Parkway and other streets and, and facilities named in honor of Livingstonians? How do you think it would make those families feel? This would be a bad precedent to set, so we're here tonight. I've asked for a copy of city policy regarding the naming and renaming of streets. I'm hearing apparently that it does not exist. Are there no procedures or guidelines for this? And I would like to put forth that a list of streets named for Livingstonians that have already been put forth and voted on and awarded to deserving citizens be established so that in the future, hopefully, they won't have to be in this position of feeling that they have to come and defend the family name. My grandfather is no longer alive to speak for himself, so we're here tonight and we appreciate, we appreciate the fact that you're listening to us and that you understand the historical significance of this. Mr. Moran, you said you're a teacher as well, so a teacher brings their tricks and their special A's. So I don't know how long I have and I'm sure my time's up, but I did bring all kinds of family history because it's not just the Campbell name. My grandmother Dorothy that was, spoke about having the store downtown, she was a Mitchell. Have you heard of Helen June Mitchell, the librarian? Have you, the Mitchell family was one of the first families to settle out in the country in Livingston. Her grandfather's brother, David Chetister, was a settler of Livingston. And the Mitchell farm out there with the Chetisters was an alfalfa farm out on Vinewood and down in the Merced River Valley there, quite large. And I was told at one time, it was one of the largest alfalfa operations in the state and that's back probably in the early 1900s. My grandparents were married in I think 1935, moved to Main Street and then you've heard, I think, testimony about what my grandfather did and the importance of that. We're all grateful for Livingston, for what Livingston gave us. It was a great place to grow up. You know, my first job was at the Livingston Farmers Association packing shed, packing those nectarines and peaches. My next job, I work for you, I was a lifeguard at the Livingston City Pool. And my next job was working at the library, the Livingston Library. I am a, I'm a teacher of about four, four decades, retired now, and the reason that I went into teaching was because of a Livingston High School teacher named Mr. Brown. And I think some of you may know him and I told him thank you a million times because he inspired me to do that. The reason I became a librarian, also a school librarian, was because of that Livingston Library. And this town has a special place in our hearts, so thank you.
Would you be willing to share the, with the local museum, like some of the, would you be willing to share some of that with the local museum if we connected with them?
Yes, I have, you know, my Bob Thompson, my dad was on City Council, I have his fire department, volunteer fire department shirt, I have his rotary plaques, my mom volunteered at the, Jack's daughter, my mom, Jacqueline Thompson, volunteered with the Friends of the Library, was in Job's Daughters, have a variety of, of different things, reflective of our family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing, appreciate it. Any other public comment for this item?
Hi, my name is Anna Lemus and Jack Campbell was my great-grandfather and I'm here tonight representing my grandparents, Tom and Joanie Campbell. Tom was Jack's son. So I have a letter that they prepared and that I'll be reading tonight. It says, Dear Livingston City Council Members, we are writing to you today- It says, "Dear Livingston City Council Members, we are writing to you today to urge you to please not change the name of Campbell Boulevard. Jack Campbell was my father. He was an honorable man with a contagious, positive attitude and outlook on life. Jack was the first police and fire dispatcher for the city of Livingston, a job that he held for 23 years from 1956 to 1979, operating from his home for 24 hours a day, seven days a week. During his last year with the department, he transferred down to the police station for an eight-hour shift. And the city soon realized that the job that Jack had been doing for over 23 years now required three more people to cover all 24 hours. He was also honored as Livingston's Man of the Year in 1984. When my father passed away in February of 1997, the city fairly quickly decided to name the old Highway 99 and connecting Frontage Road as Campbell Boulevard in honor of my father. And the city flags flew at half-staff to honor him after his death. Our family was and still is very honored and pleased to have a street named after Jack Campbell, and we are sure that you can find another street name to honor Cesar Chavez. Jack Campbell's legacy is an important piece of Livingston's history that needs to be preserved. Thank you, Tom and Joanie Campbell." And then I brought tonight a little thing as well. This was his badge. It says Livingston Police Dispatcher and it's the number one on the badge because he was the very first dispatcher for police and fire. And his name tag and so, thank you so much for listening tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Southern Council, my name's Russ Winton, 925 Chastainett Court. I had the pleasure of calling the Greatest Generation together to put the museum together when I was on the council. And I have the list of the charter members and these are the members that voted on Jack Campbell to have that name designated on that new road that was going to be the Frontage Road. I approached the Historical Society and said, "The council is wishing that you come up with as many names as you can of historical significance and a little summary of what they did." And Jack was in the top three. I mean, growing up in Livingston in the 50s and the 60s, he was our 911 call. He was the dispatcher for the cops and the fire department. If we had problems, we called Jack. And Jack was on duty 24 hours a day. And when he wanted to vacation, someone had to come in and fill in for him. And he put a lot of hours in there. I think, what, 23 hours, 23 years doing that job? And he had an unfortunate accident where he was paralyzed, but he never let that stop him. He had a van that had controls with his hands and he drove that van around town. And he was well-respected and an excellent citizen of Livingston. You know, if you want to know about, you don't know Joe Swan. We have Swan Street. We have, we have Hammett Street. Those are old-time people that were significant movers and shakers in Livingston. Crowell Street, for example, is not with us anymore. That's where the freeway went through with the Hammett-Crowell building there. But do a little research, take a little time. And when I was on the council, we messed up big time. We messed up really big time because we thought we should just change Third Street to Main Street. We just did it automatically. Did we get feedback? Whoa, did we get feedback because addresses had to change? And so, you want to go careful in this endeavor of picking out a street. My suggestion, the most important street in town is Main Street. Do what, do what Turlock did. Everyone wanted to change Mona Vista to University Way. They compromised. They put Mona Vista Avenue up here, right below, they put University Way underneath. It would look nice to say, "Main Street, no one's going to change their address, Cesar Chavez Way," right underneath. That would be a compromise and it's a very important street, the most important street in town. I wish you'd consider that as a possibility. Anyway, I got to work with all these old people. Now, I'm an old people, you know? And if you have any questions about what happened in the 80s and 90s in Livingston, come to me. I'd be glad to come down and talk to you. We can do history together and come up with solutions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Jackie?
So, just so the council knows, I get to sit with the old guy in my office and go over a list of all of our streets that I got from Admin. And it's actually going to be a part of our Centennial. And if you live on a street, Olds Avenue, it's going to tell you who that street was named after. So, we're in the works of putting something that will be a part of the museum as well as online and then hopefully, everybody can find out who's who, so.
Awesome, Jackie. That's great. That works. Any other comments? Go ahead, sir.
You were saying, like Mike Torres, you were saying you're looking for directions. Now, were you talking about Campbell and Walnut? Now, which one were you going to change?
Now, we're looking at possibly Walnut or B Street. Any, you know, any ideas? And just like Mr. Winton stated, my suggestion is the same thing as his would be symbol, put a symbolic name to it. For example, like Merced did or Turlock did where it's, the name of the street remains just like underneath it, also known as Veterans Boulevard or Caesar, you know, like Merced did or University Way and Mona Vista, so something like that.
Well, yeah, because Walnut goes all the way to Winton and I don't know what, you guys changed that one. You know, it affects a lot of ranchers and, you know, however you go again, we changed Main Street. And Campbell, there's no way you guys can change that name.
Yeah, no.
You know, old Jack, I knew Jack, he was, you know, like he says, he was paralyzed, but he drove around town. There's a lot of streets here like Swan Street and Winton, Simpson Street, there were all people that were here years back, like Mrs. Eckelfield's. There's a lot of, lot of names that you can put names on streets. All I can say is you guys are too young to know the history of Livingston. So, and I don't know where you come up with Cesar Chavez. You know, he's plastered all over California. And then, I don't have anything against or anything, but there's other names that we can pick, you know? So, I think you guys better do some homework before you guys start changing names. And the thing is that it just takes a quorum for you guys to change the name. Well, here's a quorum here tonight. Our quorum, county sits with your quorum. You know, you guys take time out. I mean, I hate to say it, you know, talk this way, but we pay your wages to improve our town and changing streets like changing shoes. I don't, I mean, I don't get it, especially when we've been here for years, you know? Like I say, and then, like I say, if you guys send notices out on these people and on these streets that you're going to try to change, half the people don't even know that this was coming up. I mean, I'm sure it's their fault because they don't attend the council meetings, but, and there's other ways to notify them too. Do your part. Thank you much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments at this time? Anybody on the phone?
I have the emails.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Monica, go ahead.
I'm going to read a few emails for the record. I received two emails from Kathy Valdez and also from Robert Anderson. I'll be reading one and the other two will be, have been provided to council together with all of the emails. Okay, for the first one is Pete Esquivias. Dear City of Livingston Council Members, my name is Pete Esquivias. I grew up in Livingston, now living in Las Vegas, Nevada. Please reconsider renaming Jack Campbell Boulevard to Cesar Chavez. Jack had many years of history in the community and service to the city of Livingston. As a police and fire service, as a dispatcher, please reconsider maybe naming part of Main Street in the heart of the city as people driving into the community will be able to see that the community supports the service of Cesar Chavez, did for the farmworkers of California and other communities. Thank you for your time to read my email. Livingston is my hometown and forever in my heart. Peter Esquivias. Good morning, City Manager. As a former resident of Livingston and still a frequent visitor, I am finding it very difficult to understand why you would like to diminish the legacy and memory of Jack Campbell. Why does it appear that his legacy has been singled out? Could it be that you are assuming Jack Campbell was a white male, non-Hispanic or man of color and overlooking the community service? Mr. Campbell provided the city of Livingston. This is, of course, is the definition of racism in practice. Do the right thing and do not change the name. Janie Richie McKeskel. Robert Anderson. Why would the city council target the removal of historically significant streets such as Campbell Boulevard? This honor was given to Jack Campbell for his many years of service to the city of Livingston. His name was forwarded to a committee to recognize for, to be recognized for this. The committee selected his name from a list of suggestions for the street. City council voted to name the street Campbell Boulevard. Then a ceremony was held and a proclamation given to Jack. Why would this street designated now be removed and his, and this honor taken back? There are other streets in town that are not named after residents who were recognized for their contribution to the history of Livingston. In addition, new streets will come online yet to be named. That could be given new names that are being requested. How sad that this family was never informed that this might be happy and now has to possibly be stripped of their family legacy. Most of them still live in Livingston. Generations of Campbells, Mitchells and Thompsons have gone through Livingston schools, worked in the community and volunteered to help make Livingston great. Jack served as the only emergency dispatcher for Livingston for years, answering fire, police, doctor and other calls 24 hours from his home to keep Livingston safe. He then transitioned to work at City Hall with employees helping him to get one of the first wheelchair, wheelchair vans in the state of California. His memory does not need to be disrespected by the removal of his designation. No family should have to be put in this, in the position to witness this treatment of their ancestors' legacy or fight for their honor. What if, what if it were your ancestors who had a street name after them and it was later being taken away? Will the Winton family, Kaji family, Kishy family, Swan family, Court family, et cetera, have to fight for the streets that were procedurally awarded to their fine family members who made Livingston their home? As we come upon celebration of the Livingston Centennial, we should choose to recognize the accomplishments of these citizens, not tear them down. Finally, other cities have procedures in place for naming streets or renaming streets. According to the city attorney, Livingston has no policy in place for this. Please enact a policy so that this does not happen in the future and those requesting street names have a clear path to navigate. Respectfully, Robert Anderson. Kathy Valdez. It is wrong to take away any or all of a street name in honor of a city resident. Campbell Boulevard was designated by city council years ago to honor longtime Livingston resident, Jack Campbell. This is deeply troubling that this honor would be taken away and his memory tarnished by, by the current mayor and council. Is Winton way next? This is hurtful and disrespectful to the legacy. These people have contributed to their hometown of Livingston. Renee Thompson. Please do not rename Campbell Boulevard. Jeff Valdez. Dear City Council, I am the great grandson of Jack Campbell who dedicated his life to helping out the community of Livingston. I am very disappointed in finding out what the mayor is looking to change the name of Campbell Boulevard. There are many other streets or new streets that will be constructed in the future that can be named after the great leader Cesar Chavez. Our family was not just honored and given a Boulevard name after my great-grandfather for no reason. He earned it. I hope you can dig a little deeper into the Livingston history to see how much of it, how much of an impact Jack Campbell had on the people and community of Livingston. Please find another street to rename because Campbell Boulevard has a great meaning and history behind the name. Thank you for your time. Have a great day. Jeff Valdez. Next emails from Dustin Thompson. I am strongly opposed to the idea of renaming Campbell Boulevard. The Campbell name has a strong history in Livingston. My great-grandfather, Jack Campbell, was a dispatcher for the city of Livingston. Jack dispatched for Livingston Police and Fire. Jack was disabled and worked from his home. His wife, my great-grandmother, Dorothy Campbell, had a dress shop on what is now Main Street. I encourage the city council to select a different street to rename. That is it.
Thank you, Monica. Appreciate it. So, bring it back to council. Like I stated before, oh, go ahead, Gabriel.
Good evening, City Council. Gabriel Salazar here. I guess for one, I'm here to keep or support the name of Campbell Street. Also, I want to thank the elder statesmen and women of Livingston for sharing their history and knowledge on our past. A lot of times, sometimes that knowledge is not passed on to the next generations or the next generation, so I appreciate that. I think the mayor mentioned that he had done it only as an example or as a reference and that he meant no disrespect to the family or to the name of this historic name in our town. So, I think, like I said, based on today's discussion, I think it's important that, or it's great to see the discussion that we're having from this, this democratic exercise of people like expressing their opinion, but then also providing good, good examples or good ideas. Some of the ideas that I heard from the folks speaking tonight were, yeah, maybe we're not a Turlock or we're not a Merced, so maybe in the future, if we do want to rename a street, we have some sort of policy or program so we could do that and maybe there's a committee that could make that decision together as a group. Number two, something I heard someone talking about, that there was, or I think it was Mr. Campbell was, or someone, I forget, sorry, Man of the Year 1984? I mean, that's something cool that we could bring back to our community. Maybe we could have a Man of the Year and Woman of the Year and it's done. Maybe it's also named after Mr. Campbell or someone who's dedicated, who's a big volunteer in our community and that gives back to our community. So, there's just a couple of things that I just want to share and just thank you again for people for sharing their, their experience and their love of our town, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So, we'll bring it back to council for any additional comments or direction or thoughts in general.
I just really appreciate everybody voicing their opinions in regards to this item that was brought to us, well, that was introduced back in June. And this is one of the things that I truly love about our community. Been here over 50 years, a resident of Livingston. I'm the fourth generation. My children are the fifth here in Livingston. So, many of the names that have been brought up throughout the conversations tonight have brought back some memories of my parents. So, again, hearing the ideas and just everybody coming together as a community to support our, our founders that made and created what we try to keep here as part of Livingston. It is our history and I've been to the museum several times and many great ideas, like Gabriel had mentioned, have come out of this conversation and it sparked, great ideas moving forward with the Centennial, bringing back the names, providing even more history to those of us that aren't even aware of how Livingston and its community was built. So, it was, this is a great conversation. I love how tonight's meeting has been going. I love how tonight's meeting has been going thus far, being able to have this back and forth and a, a lot of understanding and compassion for where you came, where you are as a family and where we are as a community. So again, very appreciative of tonight's conversation and I'm looking forward to seeing what else can come from, you know, something that, that appeared to be a misunderstanding, where everybody's come together, we have different ideas and we've shared them and something beautiful has come out of it. Great ideas and so I'm thankful for that. Thank you for coming out tonight and, and, and speaking, speaking to, to council and, and we, we are here to listen and, and support our community.
Thank you, Maria. Any thoughts about the item in regards to renaming or identifying, symbolically assigning a name?
I'm, I'm really keen on the fact that we would be able to share a, a current name with a, a name below it.
I'm in agreement with that as well. Councilmember Zamorran, any comments?
Yes, thank you. Once again, I really appreciate, I know that some of you guys had to drive two hours to be here, but I think it's also very important. It goes a long way to really emphasize how important this is. Not only, you know, not just because it is, it is your family member, but because of the process and, and, and once again, I think the educational process, at least for me, was added. So thank you very much. And then now it, it encourages me to learn even more. So, you know, eventually I, I will be, you know, asking more and, you know, I'm a history buff, you know, so, so anything in history, it's, it's always very interesting to me. So once again, thank you for being here. I really appreciate it. And, and so, you know, once again, something that I mentioned at that last June meeting, it's, it's the, there's still an option of consideration for the new development that will be coming up, you know, to, to look into possibilities and, and use those opportunities to, you know, if there's a desire to, to name some streets for, you know, in recognition of anyone's, anyone, we can use that opportunity as well. I, I, I think that other idea about symbolically naming a street, it's, I, I think it's also a good idea. But at this time, I, I would, I would wanna, I would want us to consider, you know, kind of come back to, or go back to the drawing table and, and look at, I, I, I know different community members have reached out and said, well, this street, that street, that street. You know, just different options, which is great. But I'm also looking at the, I don't want people to be changing, to have to change their addresses, you know? I mean, every time I move, I don't know about you, but every time I move, it's, man, I gotta call every single, you know, company, credit card, and the bank, and this and that, and change your address, you know, I can only imagine. And I definitely don't, you know, although I don't mind the calls, you know, I don't want to put people in that situation. And so my suggestion is to, you know, we can continue this conversation, come back with more ideas. We don't have to make a decision tonight. You know, we can continue this item. And at least that will give me more time to do more research, you know, what other cities are doing. Also, to look into what other cities might have in regards to an ordinance regarding street naming because then, you know, here's another positive. Then this just came up. I mean, you know, we don't wanna, we don't want anybody else and we don't want to be in this situation anymore, you know, or have anybody else be in that situation. So we could look into what other cities are doing in regards to either an ordinance or a process when it comes to naming streets under somebody else's legacy or history or part of the work and stuff like that. So I would, I would, I would recommend and ask for the council to, to continue this item. And it's great conversation. I really like this because I'm not only being educated, but I'm also being informed. And, and it just brings more questions and I want to make sure that whenever we do something, we do it right. Thank you.
Councilman, or Mayor Potem Garcia on the phone?
Yes, I'm still on the phone. I just want to say thank you to the family and friends that shared their history today. I learned a lot on it, stuff that I didn't know. I'll be the first one to say, so I just want to say thanks for taking the time, coming out and sharing that with us tonight. Really appreciate it. And I'll say, I think we should come back and bring up some names of streets or whatnot and we'll look at it in roundtable discussion that comes along. So I agree with them.
Sorry, what was, what was that last part?
Did I agree with the question of Zamorran about the roundtable discussion? You know, bringing it back and probably putting some street names together and hope from there.
Okay. Once again, thanks to the family for coming out. Appreciate it. Vanessa, there's like a split. Do you got some direction possibly or no? I know that, obviously, I think, I agree. I think there needs to be a process of how to, in the future, identify a, a way of, of renaming a street. Has to be a process or see what other cities are doing. I think that's a good idea. In regards to specifically, specifically to, to this, I know a couple of us are in agreement with just sharing the street name, like symbolically naming one of the streets. And then two other council members would like some, have some additional follow-up. And then one of our council members is not here tonight, so.
I believe that when I spoke June 7th, I also wanted more information on the policies and procedures moving forward. So I still hold that. We do need to have that in place before we even, it, it's a, what, what I did say was it's a great idea to have both names. But we do need the policies and procedures in place. That way, we're not having to go back and fix it or have just a preventative so that there are no mistakes, you know, that was made by previous councils, current councils, and future councils.
Tom, I'm your question for you. Your other jurisdictions, do they have, follow any kind of protocol or procedure?
I don't think anybody has a procedure for this that I'm aware of, maybe some bigger city somewhere, but it, it's not very common. Because what usually happens is you have the symbolic naming that's been done in our area.
Like Turlock or?
Right, Turlock, Merced. So that's, again, could, I'm sure other places have policies, but my experience, nobody in this area does.
Okay, because they're smaller jurisdictions? All right, so I guess we could come back and further, is that okay, Vanessa?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Yes, so I have a direction for staff, for staff so we can coordinate with our city attorney and the city staff that will be involved in this, in, in helping me with this project. We will see what other cities are doing regarding either renaming streets or symbolically designating a street name to honor someone and look into a street renaming policy. I can share that our city ordinance talks about or has, has, the municipal code has a process in how new streets are recorded or they are included or the process for new streets to be named. I don't have that, that, that municipal ordinance in front of me, but we don't have a street renaming policy. So that is something that, that narrows the focus for us, not necessarily on renaming a street because the municipal code already addresses that, but the focus will be on the renaming process to bring back to council. And definitely, we will schedule a future discussion for other options and to, to have a roundtable with the council for what they would like to do, either choosing a new street and whether, whether you would like to go through the exercise of renaming it or symbolically designating it. Will that be fair to?
Yes. Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
I think you captured it pretty good. So thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Odds on the consent calendar are considered routine or non-conservation will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by the city manager or city council member. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council or city manager request that specific item be removed. Council, any motions?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Anybody second? I'll second it myself. Go ahead, Monica. Roll call.
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
I did.
Okay. Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Zamorran?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four, zero.
All right, so we're gonna go to item number four, which is approval agreement with Dolan for the Department of Parks and Recreation, Grant Project Management. Resolution proving the word of agreement for the Department of Parks and Recreation, Grant Project Management with Dolan, am I pronouncing it correctly? Dolan. All right, Vanessa, or who's presenting this?
Thank you, council. Our Public Recreation and Finance Department will present this item.
Thank you, Monica. Mayor and council members, we are bringing forth to you.
Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. And I think we want to make sure that it's on the microphone.
It is. Perfect. Yeah, Monica tapped it and approved it. So mayor and city council members, we are bringing to you, both Jackie and I, the City of Livingston RecPlex Grant Management, excuse me, Grant Project Management Recommendation. Forgive me while I become able to use this. I got it. Great. So at the city's council meeting in December of 2020, approval was given to staff to apply for funding provided by Prop 68. And this is from the Department of Recreation, California Department of Recreation. An announcement was received on December 8th that the city of Livingston was awarded 7.3 million for the new Livingston RecPlex. And we have at the table with us Gabriel Salazar, who also was instrumental in providing the application for the approved project. What was approved was 1.9 million for the acquisition of a two-acre parcel that is complete. The next award portion was designated for soft cost, which equated to 1.3 million for design and coordination of the project. And then the remaining amount, 4.1 million, was actually to construct the recreation center by converting the 25,000 square foot warehouse into what you see here posted up on the table. Jackie has brought with her this poster board that actually demonstrates what the community has designated as the use of the space and the different amenities that the community has decided that they would like to see included, which are listed there. So the grant award did include as part of the 1.3 million for soft costs for designing construction of the project, costs that would be associated with grant project management. And so if we look at the timeline below, we can see that we received the grant award, we did acquire the land. And right now, we are at the phase where the project management needs to be engaged. And we need to move forward so that we can get into the design and construction phase so that we can hit the target completion date of December 2024. And that's per our application and also the expectation for the project itself. We did also engage Gabriel, who was kind enough to join us tonight, to, not only did he participate in the application, which was awarded, but he also was able to put together a committee comprised of the same team that were there to evaluate and rank based on levels of service specific for grant management, their team's composition and their relevant experience, their reporting ability under a certain funding scenarios, as well as tracking of project cost, milestones, and other critical components of the, the project itself. The firm's experience with Prop 68 funding specifically was considered. Receiving a $7 million grant does require a certain level of experience and, and ability to meet expectations. And also the completed projects that are Prop 68 or otherwise grant funded was also a critical component of the consideration. Included in the proposals provided to the committee was strictly the project management scope. There was no consideration for cost. Price was not a factor in their evaluation. So I will gladly turn it over to Gabriel as what you see before you here is the scoring that was done. And you can see that the company that fell into the first position or that is being rec, oh, pardon me, that is being recommended is Dolan. And we also have Gregor, Markle and Ben Simonson here from Dolan, who are, again, listed in the first position. And I'll turn it over to Gabriel to speak more about this process.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, city council, public, and Dolan as well. So yeah, basically Jackie contacted me per direction of Vanessa in terms of working with the team to rate and grade the scope of work for three different firms. This matrix was developed to evaluate and analyze the different areas of, within the scope of services. I know Jackie also reached out to Lourdes Perez and another colleague of hers from Public Health Advocates. And Public Health Advocates was also instrumental in obtaining the grant. They did a lot of the community meeting facilitation. They also assisted with the grant application, et cetera. So they also were part of the committee along with Jackie and I think Vanessa. And basically, this is kind of, it seems like the majority of the committee recommended number one, Dolan. I don't know if I say it correctly. But basically, that was a recommendation based on their scope of work, based on their experience, prior examples of them working in other cities with similar type of facilities. I think they had experience doing gyms in other parts of the Bay Area, to my understanding, also doing community facilities, that kind of work, doing adaptive reuse. They also had planners on board, I believe, and engineers as well. And like Jennifer mentioned, we had no idea what the cost would be, which kind of, when I, when I looked at that, I was kind of like, well, I want to know the cost, but it kind of helps us also to in analyzing these and being objective and not weighing that in, but basically making a determination based only on the scope of work, the qualifications, their experience, et cetera. And basically, the committee determiner is recommending the first group, Dolan, for project management of this grant. Dahlin, for project management of this grant.
Awesome. Thank you. Any further information? Okay.
Yeah, there's more slides.
Okay.
But I didn't know if we wanted to pause if there were any questions.
Any questions so far? Counsel at this time?
Yes. Well, actually, it's, you guys mentioned scope of work. So, for the general public, what does that mean? I mean, so if you can provide a little bit, I guess, and simplify language, what does that mean, the scope of work?
Scope of work is basically the, how do I say this? It's the contents, or, that's not simplifying. It's the type of work that they're gonna do for this project, what it means by project management. Project management means, in this case, being able to receive funds from the state, being able to provide a certain set of goals and milestones and what city staff usually call their deliverables. So, for instance, one would be getting, construct a contractor to do the work. Or another component would be having someone do the plans for this work. It would also be someone also helping out with, like I said, a contractor, hiring a team. As part of this grant application process, we had to consult with Conservation Corps in California and basically get information from them in terms of if we're gonna contract out with them to do a component of the work. They provided kind of an estimate of the hours and time and the kind of work that they could do for this project as well. And my understanding is the project management team will also have to reach out to them as well. So, it's just kind of the different components that are involved in, you know, the plans, the design stage, getting the permits, working with the county, working with the state, getting the appropriate environmental approvals, basically constructing and building this new building, new facility, within the guidelines of the grant. And if the state grant team asks for information in terms of, okay, you're not gonna get, you won't get a million for the acquisition until you provide this information, then that means they work on doing that. And then basically, it's kind of a process where they get reimbursed, or they'll do more work, and then they'll get paid as the project continues from those funds.
Gabriel, if I may add as well, councilmember Moran, also, it is very important that the company that we select, it is a company that is familiar with grant management specifically for this Prop 68. One of it is because this grant, it's time limited. So, we have specific, a specific window of time in which we're giving the money and we're supposed to contract all of these experts to be able to design, to be able to get us all the permits, to be able to prep the land and do the construction. But at the same time, we need, we need the experts to know how to deal with the intricacies of getting the money back from the state in order to make the city whole as we, as we move forward with the construction of this project. So, this is some of the, this is one of the deliverables that the project manager is responsible for, which is providing those key milestones to this, and providing those reports to the state. And they are the liaison between, between the state, between the contractors that will make this recreation center happen. And they're also the liaison between staff in order for us to be able to have timely records reported to the state and have timely claims. So, money continues to come in as we move forward with the building of the complex. At the same time, this is, like I mentioned, this is a time-limited funding. So, we are, we are on the, already on the, in the race in order to move forward with getting the recreation center completed in order for us to submit all of our, all of our claims and everything. Our reports are in place in order for the state to provide that $7.3 million in funding.
Vanessa, sorry, am I adding something else? Okay. So, like councilmember Moran, kind of looking at the matrix, for instance, like staffing. Dahlin basically noted they're gonna have a project coordinator and a project manager, which is, you know, they have their staffing. And then the other team put, they're gonna have one quality control manager. Another team just put general project management team. Another example in terms of experience, Odell put, basically their experience wasn't really clear on their experience with these kind of projects. Goveya didn't say anything. And then Dahlin stated, yes, they worked on the Yucca Valley Municipal Rec Center. They worked on the Mark Gallo Fitness Center, et cetera. They provided a detailed history of their firm background. They provided a detailed history of the work experience of each staff person on there with years, examples, those types of things. Also, references, as I alluded to earlier. Also, they have an architect on staff. They have a construction person on staff. So, these are kind of some of the things that we looked at evaluating the proposals.
Okay. Because actually, that is really good. And I was able to read all of that. And it does, it does, I guess, in a way compare, you know, and kind of give some light to what that committee was looking at and how they were able to come up with that recommendation or the evaluation. One thing that I, I'm just trying to understand, kind of visualize what the process was to kind of see how you guys came up with this recommendation as well. So, also, when I ask about the scope of work, my understanding, and maybe anyone can correct me, it's step one, this is, you know, this is a list of things that need to be done to go from here to here, including, you know, engineering, including, you know, I don't know what you guys call it, but the little drawings, you know, one needs to be constructed and stuff like that. And then contracting, and then getting the money, getting, I guess, part of the money from the state, and then the next, the next bunch of money from the state to do the other thing, or to do the next steps and so on. And was that, was that, and I don't know who can answer this, was that list of items, I guess, what I call, like, whenever I'm looking for a new job, and not that I'm looking for a new job, but when someone's looking for a new job, you know, I can specifically refer this to teaching. You have the responsibilities, the duties, the expectations that the school district is looking to have from that whoever applies for this position, teaching position. So, was, was something like that, I guess, provided to all the participants? That way, everybody, everybody was aware, like, this is what we expect. This is what we want. This is, this is what, you know, are we expecting a meeting once a month, or bi-weekly, or every three months? Or do we want reports only to the city manager, or to, I don't know, recreation, or to, or to the council? Was that something that was, was that scope of work list, or whatever responsibilities, details of what's expected, was that provided to anybody that applied?
Absolutely. Councilmember Moran, all of the applicants received the same information, which included the grant information, grant timeline, the funding. And, and basically, we went out, and this is a request for quotes. And they came back with a quote of the, of the project management. At the same time, they provided a scope of what they, within their quote or their pricing, what those services would be included. And for Dahlin, those, the project deliverables, what we call it, it's attachment number two in your packet. And you can see what, although it's not an all-inclusive list, it's the list that they provided in their committee to say, you know, we are going to be engaging with you in the pre-design, in the design, construction, and closeout of the grant. And that is one, I mean, like, that, those deliverables, it's what the committee that evaluated this package took in consideration to see and evaluate and rank all of the firms and the level of engagement that each one of them provided in their, in their quote that they were going to do with the city. So, per the recommendation or the evaluation committee, Dahlin was the one that stood out because of the deliverables that it was provided in their, in their packet. It was one of the companies that was providing the most engagement and the most one-on-one liaison meetings and weekly updates with our staff.
In this process, and then I don't know if it was included, and were there any references provided? Like, somebody mentioned other projects that were done. Were there references from those projects to have, I guess, to have somewhat of an understanding how were those projects within, completed within the time of, the frame time? Or were they completed under budget? Or were they, were there any type of references provided by any of the agencies?
Those are the next slides in the presentation. We wanted to pause and see if there was any questions on the recommend, on the evaluation committee. But our next couple of slides are going to be focused on the work that Dahlin has done in and around the Central Valley.
And just real quick, before we continue, were, were any of the other three companies invited? Or were they interested in participating in today's meeting?
They, they were all shared our decision. And it's a public meeting, so they were able to attend.
Thank you both. Thank you, Vanessa, for going over those items.
Mic?
The mic's on, but the clicker's not working. Perfect. Thank you. So, these are the qualifications of the recommended service provider, which is Dahlin. It includes 45 public agencies that they have worked with, 300 California-specific projects that include, as listed, civic, institutional, commercial, planning, and residential. Collectively, they have 40-plus years of design and planning experience, both for public and private sectors. Listed below, or shown below, are a number of their different awards that they have received as a company providing that service. And I'll pause for a moment, so you have time to read. And those are recent awards. There may likely be many before that. We highlighted what was most current. So, I'll go ahead and move on. And these are actually some of their noted projects, as city manager recognized within California, Central Valley, or Bay Area. The Mark Gallo Health and Fitness Center, as was mentioned previously, in Modesto. A picture of it there. It included four acres and 28,500 square feet. Oak Park, this is demonstration of an interior of a community center that includes basketball courts, which is, as you can see from what Jackie has provided up here at the table, as demonstrated would be those courts as well, or something similar. Moving on, there are a couple of other noted projects that I wanted to bring to this presentation, the Mountain View Community Center. And you can see there, there's like a recreation area, potentially for arts and crafts. That project, they actually added an additional 7,000 new square feet to that existing building as part of that project. Their Pleasant Hill Community Center was 2.3 acres and 21,000 square feet. So, my examples were attempting to align the project that we have before us and like projects that they have completed. And then, of course, we have our City of Livingston RecPlex. And we can see, as Jackie has provided, a picture of it in its original state, and also a recent picture that was taken as part of the application process. And one notable item is that we actually were awarded this as round four of that state funding. And so, we're very excited to bring this information to you and to also recommend that council approve the contract with Dahlin for project management services to ensure that our RecPlex gets constructed within the timeframe allotted by the granting agency. And with the resources provided by Dahlin, we feel like this will be a successful project that, in my eyes, is a legacy project for the community, for the council, for the citizens, and for those that participate. Jackie? Gabriel, I'd like to invite any additional comments that you might have that I may not have covered in the slides.
No, thank you, Jennifer and Vanessa. I just wanted to share that I know the amount is, I think, up to 325. It doesn't mean that all those funds will be expended, that all those funds will be expended for the project management team. I think city management's gonna, and finance will most likely meet with the applicant, go over the deliverables, the scope of work, and then kind of work out the fine details in terms of where the deliverable's gonna finally be on paper. And if there's things that could be removed or aren't necessary, then maybe that may go a little bit lower. But that's kind of like the estimate of what city staff is thinking for Dahlin to move forward with project management of this.
I wish that you guys had the complete packet of what these proposals were. Because as you go through, and in simple language, it's like reading McDonald's menu going up to a wonderful steakhouse. And so, this is a legacy project. We have one shot at this, guys. And if we don't have somebody really qualified, we want this to come out really, really good, top-notch. The grant does pay for their services, and so, let's do it right. And you know how, what a cheapskate I am. And for me to say this, you know, I was so impressed. And it's just, I look forward to working with them. We have a lot of ideas. We want to engage the community, just as we did at getting the grant. And as a part of their proposal, they say they will work closely with us. So, I just, if we can get the buy-in from the community as even being a part for the ideas on the interior and so forth, this is a win-win for all of us. So, that's my comment.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Gabriel. Once again, I know you played a big role, important role, from the beginning. So, I'm very thankful for your, all your efforts and continued work with this project. Jackie, your whole team, you know, appreciated all the work you guys do. You know, your resume speaks for itself, all the different work you guys been doing in California and all the projects. And you're right, Jackie, I think we have one shot. And even if it costs more, we wanna make sure that we have the correct and qualified applicant for such a very important project for our community. So, do you guys wanna just introduce yourself real quick to the community? Yeah, the microphone, please.
Here we go. Can you hear me? I'm Gregor Markle. I'm the senior principal with Dahlin. We have been in business for over 45 years now, primarily in the Bay Area. But we do a lot of work in the Central Valley, as you can see from some, just a very tiny smattering of the examples we do. As Gabriel mentioned, we are experienced in doing Prop 68 work. We are doing work right now with the town of Yucca Valley on their new recreation and aquatic center. It's about a $21 million project that they're working on. And we're actively working with them as well. We think we're bringing a lot of skill to this project. We're really excited about it. We are going to be the city's advocate and your liaison to all of the different groups that get brought in throughout the project process. You hear the term on time, on budget? That is our job. In a nutshell, it's to make sure that this is scheduled appropriately, that we have all the assets in place, and that we make this happen. And like I said, we're, we believe we're good at it, and we're very excited to be a part of this process. We hope you approve this, and we hope we get a chance to work with the city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you introducing yourself. So, at this time, I'll bring it, go ahead, you can take a seat if you want. Anybody have any questions?
Any question you guys have.
Thank you, thank you. Bring it to council for further discussion or any additional questions or comments. Anybody else? Anybody else that have anything else?
Yeah, so, you know, anytime that anything comes before, well, I guess, let me speak for myself. Anytime that anything comes before me and it comes to spend a dollar from the people's money, is I want to make sure that we get the most for the one buck. I remember participating throughout the process with this grant since day one. Actually, that process, and I don't know if Jackie remembers, that was the first time and probably the only time that my wife and my daughter participated, because that's how important it was. They do participate in other things, but, you know, I remember how significant this was. And this room was full of people. And so it is, it is something, I mean, of great benefit to everyone in this community. And also, I wish that I have had the opportunity to have what you guys have before you and now here. You know, it's, anytime, this is my thought process. And that's why I ask a lot of questions sometimes. I want to kind of go back and kind of visualize the process and how you guys came up, or in this case, with your support and your participation. You know, what is it that you guys had before you and stuff like that? So now that, you know, I want to make sure that we get the best for the buck. Experience helps. I mean, definitely, you know, we do want to have someone that has, and is the experience that has done it before, that is able to do it before. I just, I just feel like I don't have all the information that I wish to have here in front of me. I wish that I had the opportunity to have the other two companies or the other two companies here. And just wondering, you know, why the one company did not provide a number? Just questions for me. I don't know if anybody knows why, or they just didn't. Do they have, I mean, I don't know, I'm just, it's just a regular question for me.
So I believe, if I remember correctly, one of the comments was made by them that they could do it for whatever the grant said. So that kind of makes you feel a little nervous, you know, I mean, why couldn't we have a quote?
Yes, Jackie, we didn't, we didn't have a specific amount. The grant covers $1.3 million for soft cost, and the quote or the price, it was 30% of the grant. So you would essentially be looking at three quotes, and one of them, it would be for $1.3 million.
So does that mean that that amount has to be spent in that soft cost or up to? I mean, so let's say that, you know, a company comes in and says, you know, we only spent $900,000 of that amount. Does that amount, is that amount allowed to go back into the project and says, hey, you know, council, city, we, you know, we didn't spend all this money, and maybe we can add, you know, something else to it? Is that how it works?
The grant allows for soft cost for up to $1.3 million, which is for project management, design, architecture, and permitting, and everything that it's not construction. In the event that there are savings within that category could potentially be used for construction as well. But there is a lot more than grant management that goes into using that $1.3 million. And that is, the $1.3 million for soft cost and grant management, it's only a piece of everything that needs to be paid out of that, that amount. I believe if you see deliverables for project management, anything that is before construction, so the pre-design, the design stage, all of that, those efforts that happened within those two stages have to be, have to be spent out of the soft cost bucket. So any kind of, any kind of, gosh, all of the bidding, the coordinations, the permits, and the design that goes into play. If there is anything that you may know more in detail what goes into soft cost? So engineering and architects gets paid out of this $1.3 million, besides project management. Thank you, I'm sorry.
It's such a small room. It's easy. Sorry. Yeah, so with the soft cost, there's a lot of different things that go into that bucket. It's not just project management cost, it's your design team. So that's actually architects, mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers, your structural engineer. You will likely need to hire a geotechnical engineer. We will have some sequel work to do on this project. We may need to bring in a consultant for that piece of it. There may be other elements on the site that require an arborist, or, you know, it's an old building, it may require hazardous materials studies or, you know, to determine abatement requirements. All of those engineers or those detailed designers become a part of that soft cost project. In addition to that, what I was starting to say is, you as a city will start to incur costs, because we will go out to the same type of RFP that got us here to get these designers and engineers on board. So we will have to do some outreach for each of those. There's time and there's cost involved in doing that. Similarly, once the designers are done and you've got that completed, you'll go to the city. The city's going to, I'm assuming, is going to charge you guys building permit fees and plan check costs to do this work. It won't be part of a pass-through, so you'll have to pay those. You know, all of those types of fees and expenses, printing paper, just to do the design work, to submit for permits, those types of things become soft cost for the project. So it's all those miscellaneous, small, little things that actually do add up to quite a bit before construction. Construction is a single piece of a grand overall project budget. So that's kind of how we look at it.
So I did read the report, but it's just for the general public. So part of the proposal is that you will have someone giving reports? How often? Every week? Is that what it said?
I'll be honest, I haven't memorized the deliverables. However, if that is what we conclude with staff is necessary to do this, yes.
Okay.
If I may add, Councilmember Moran, basically, yes. Like the gentleman mentioned, it's going to be up to Vanessa and the Finance Department when they do that scope of work, how often will fine-tune, or staff will fine-tune the details there in terms of what's appropriate for this project. Is it appropriate every week? Is that the best time? If we do it every, best time and use of resources every weekly meetings? Or is it best bi-weekly? Is it best monthly, quarterly, monthly, et cetera? So that's kind of how that's going to get figured out as this moves forward. And another point, to your point, like Vanessa was mentioning, the cap for the administration of it is $1.3 million, correct? So basically, about 25% of that $1.3 million is being used for the project management team. That leaves about 75% that's going to be used for engineering, RFPs, for bidding, environmental work, et cetera. So the less, the less money we use for the project management, the better it is we could use for the other areas that need to get, that have to be worked on.
And so, because I don't have, I don't have it in front of me, this agreement with whichever the company ends up having this project, is there a stipulation, like, what happens if we don't, if we don't like the way it's being done? Or the work, or we're not happy with, I mean, with just with the job being done? Can we just say, you know what, you know, according to item number 6.1, it says here that, you know, if you're not doing your job the way we're expecting it, or blah, 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 we can just say goodbye and see you later? I don't have that in front of me either. Is there?
We have a professional standards agreement that we will go into, sign once this is approved. And basically, we do have, and part of the deliverables and the project administration, it's to have this weekly calls or touch basis with staff in order to ensure that the project, it's coming out to the, to the standards that, or the expectations that we have to the project management. And it is going to be our job to be able to feed that information to them as well.
And councilman, generally, there's a out clause for the city in that contract, and they're just paid for what they do up to that point.
I believe you're allowed to terminate us for cause if you decide that that's the case. I've never been fired, but I said, I don't plan to be fired.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm, I mean, the little research that I was able to do, you know, it shows some of the projects that you guys have been working on. My job here is to make sure that we make the right decision the first time, and that we get the most for our buck, you know, for everyone in the community. So I just want to make sure, like, actually, I don't think I have enough questions, but, you know, just, I'm just thinking ahead, what are some of the issues and concerns or questions that any resident might have? So, but that's all for now. Thanks.
If I may add, also, Mayor, councilmember, the packets and the deliverables, we, city staff, we selected an evaluation committee in order to do that review and provide that recommendation to us. So everything was analyzed very closely by the evaluation committee. They were the ones that, that went page by page with, with the menus of everything that it was going to be provided by, by the three companies that provided us with deliverables. And they're the ones that, that are making this recommendation to the city. So as far as what was analyzed, it was, it was provided to that evaluation committee to give us a recommendation. And then also, in, to be sensitive, that some of the information that it's provided, it's an intellectual right from the, from the companies that provide these quotes. We've attached the deliverables of the recommended project manager.
Yeah, definitely. I do appreciate everyone that's involved. I mean, it's, but I guess I like to do a lot of reading, and I like to do a lot of research myself. And I just, you know, not to take that away from anybody that participated in that committee, but I do like to make my own evaluation based on the same resources that everyone, everyone else has. So that's why it's just, I try to kind of go through the process and visualize it. But not to take that away from anybody else at all. I mean, I do appreciate everyone, the volunteers, at anything for the city or the community.
Counsel, any other questions? Garcia on the phone.
I don't have any questions.
I will take it out for public comment. Do you have any public comment?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I think that it is evident tonight with the information presented to us that none of us are experts on this topic, which is exactly why we need a firm with experience, such as Dallin, to come in and manage this project for us. Going back to your analogy about an interview, when somebody is hiring for a position, they don't, they're not concerned about the two candidates that didn't show up. So we shouldn't penalize this firm because they were here and present and the others weren't. We need to make good decisions with the information that is presented to us, that has been analyzed by people who are very well-informed and educated on the topic, and hopefully move forward with the recommendation of staff, because these are the individuals who have put in the work, who will continue to put in the work to make sure that this is a successful project for the community, and truly is a legacy project for everyone in this room. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other public comment? Anybody on the phone?
Yes, Jason Robb.
Go ahead.
I think we should follow through with Dallin. I looked it up, looked them up online. They're very reputable. Anything that can help our city can help. Recreation has done a great job, especially for Centennial. And for the community, I think the center will be a great thing. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the phone? Okay, we're going to bring it back to council.
Fine, oh, sorry. Can I speak as a resident now?
Yes, go ahead.
So I'm going to speak as, check over there, or my, okay, here. Okay. As a resident, I just want to say I was happy to participate in this process. As Councilmember Moran said, it's not just city staff that was involved in this. It was, I remember, back then, it was Councilmember Aguilar that was at the meetings, Councilmember Moran, people from the Parks and Rec Commission, like Roberto Godinez, Julio Millán, Chuyin Aguilar, different members from the community that were involved in this process at the various community meetings. So a lot of residents and members of the community are excited with this and happy to see it move forward. When I was driving down here, or up here this afternoon, I talked to my dad, and then I asked him, well, do you know anybody that worked there? And he's like, yeah, you know what? Every morning, we're at McDonald's, there's a couple of guys, Aguilar's, that worked there, brothers, they worked there 30 years, another one worked like 35 years, when it was a packing house for sweet potatoes, for Camotes, and for Duraznos, for peaches. So it's kind of, it's real cool to see this site being reused, adapted reuse for something cool that's going to benefit the community. And of course, this area was selected, and this project site was selected because we met the criteria for eligibility to receive grant funds, and because it's an area that doesn't have any parks. So that's why it also was approved by the state in terms of designated site. So that's kind of something I just wanted to share as a resident of Community of Livingston, and I'm also happy to see this move forward.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Now, definitely, I think, is there any other citizen comments? I don't think so. But no, definitely, I mean, it's been a journey. I remember when I was a councilmember, that we started, you know, seeking funding for a recreation facility that was, it was much needed. You know, from the beginning, Jackie, the old Recreation Commission, Gabriel, you were very involved. I appreciate all the work. And so I know you're invested in this. I know how vested you're in this process. And so I trust your judgment and the committee you established to really assess the applicant. So I fully trust the recommendation that was analyzed professionally. And with that, knowing that you put sacrificed time and efforts to get this grant, so I trust that, you know, you made the best recommendation possible, knowing that you were here from the beginning, and staff's recognizing that, and also making that recommendation overall. So, you know, it's been a long journey, lucky, I mean, very fortunate and very grateful that we got this opportunity, and let's do it right. Let's do it with a professional firm that's going to really guide us through the process and make sure that we are successful in completing this and moving forward. And like I said, the resume speaks for itself, their experience, reputation, the packet you guys put together, I think it makes sense. So I'm fully agreement to move forward and approve this. So council, if you guys don't have any other questions, I would like to make the motion to approve the agreement with Dallin for the Department of Parks and Recreation Grand Project Management.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second.
Excuse me. I still have.
Oh, go ahead. You have questions?
Yeah. So I guess the question, it's to the firm, I mean, we do have a number of 355, 700. What is the possibility that that cost will go up, based on your experience in the last couple of years?
In terms of our fees? So we've put together our best understanding based on the RFP that was sent out, and that's the deliverables we sent back. We have a fixed fee based on that, so. We have a fixed fee based on that, so as long as we are staying to that, our fees will not go up. It sounds like we may be trimming our fees, which means our fees will likely go down.
Okay.
I mean, we are like other professional organizations, we, we bill fees based on service. And so our, we align our fees with what we are doing for you, for the services and the deliverables that we are presenting to you.
So I'm assuming based on, based on that, that, let's say that, and I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Fair enough.
So let's say that within this two months of work, you did this, this, and this, and this, then you'll be charging this. Is that like an, would that be like an atomized?
Yes.
Report of, this is what we've done, this is what we charge, this is what we need to get paid now?
Yeah, so we, we've bundled those things together, and we do things based on the sections of deliverables. It's kind of a milestone-based system that's been set up. And again, that's to be finalized with staff in terms of how our fees, how our fees are finally structured. And if you, as the city, determine that you want to have breakouts for specific sections of those, we can absolutely do that for you. We will be obligated to turn over all of our time cards and all of our work and other work product to you as a part of this. So if there's questions about the deliverables or the work that's been put into a specific section, and you want to audit those things, we are open to doing that with you. And I'm going to guess that that was a mandate of the contract. I haven't read it line by line, but I would, every, almost every city has an audit requirement for your contract. So we would do that.
Is there something that will be available to myself? I'm assuming, but just.
Yeah, we, we will have to submit the claims to the state with all of that information. So that information that it's publicly available.
I had one, well, and thank you, thank you for that. Appreciate it. So the other question is, and I think.
We have a motion on the floor, so can we continue?
Well, I guess the, the way the mayor proposed it was if there were no more questions.
Go ahead and ask your question.
So just a last question, and this is, I think this is for Vanessa. Just for clarification, as word says, recommendation, says to provide project management for the recently approved Livingston Recreation Center and authorize the city finance, the city manager slash finance director to make appropriate adjustments to the budget. Does that mean, not to the general budget, right? I mean, that just make adjustments based on, on the grant?
That's correct. This is only affecting the grant. So we ask that we get the authority to put in the line item now that instead of $1.3 million for, for soft cost for this project, that we can deduct through the contract, and we can make that budget adjustment so we can have that money set aside to pay the grant, the project manager.
Okay, just wanted to double check. Thank you. That's it. No more questions.
Monica, that's standard language, right?
Roll call. Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 4-0.
Congratulations. Thank you. Looking forward to working with you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time. And Gabriel, once again, thanks for all your efforts. Jackie, thank you. Appreciate you, guys. See you, guys, Thursday? Thursday. Awesome.
They've agreed, they've agreed to come to the ceremony as well.
Awesome, great.
And we're very happy to have them on this project. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you. So council, any other future agenda items at this time?
Yes, so I was expecting for us to have a continuation today for the city attorney evaluation, which was removed from the agenda. Can we have that on our next agenda, which will be on the first week of August, I guess? for a future agenda item, you know, just maybe a report, not necessarily, or just to see, and I think Vanessa had this in regards to street naming process, just, just, you know, just wondering what other cities might have. And, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Mayor and council, as you know, my, the managing partner won't be back until July 31st. And I know we want to have the meeting with Councilmember Moran, so maybe the second meeting in August makes more practical sense for that.
Okay. So we'll, we'll talk to Doug and figure something out. Any other agenda items at this time? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting 9:36 PM. Thank you.